Good evening and welcome to the Milton Planning Board on September 10, 2015. This is the fifth meeting of Fiscal 2016. My name is Emily Ennis. I'm the chair, and I'll ask the other members to introduce themselves.
Alex Whiteside, member.
Michael Kelly, member.
Liam Clark, planning director.
Julia Getman, clerk.
Tim Swinski, assistant town planner.
Brian Burris, member.
Cheryl Togayes, member.
We are being recorded tonight, and we are on a delayed feed for the broadcast. I'm just going to walk us through the agenda for tonight, and then we'll get into the business in front of us. Approval of past minutes and our next meeting dates, which right now are scheduled for September 24th, October 8th, 22nd, and the town meeting on the 26th. We'll have citizens speak. Under new business, we have an A&R for 152 Robbins Street, an amendment to a special permit for culture landscaping, and discussion and potential vote on the proposed amplified sound bylaw. We have three public hearings tonight. At 7:05, we'll do site plan review for 333 Brushhill Road. This is continued from August 27th. At 7:20, we'll begin the public hearing on the zoning articles for the October town meeting. At 8 o'clock, we'll start the special permit and site plan approval for Thayer Nursery. It's continued from August 27th, and all of these times are, of course, dependent on the public hearing in front of it. And then under old business, we have an A&R for 711 Randolph Avenue. So with that, I've had a request to have the minutes approved at our next meeting, which, given the amount of things we have on our agenda, I think is perfectly reasonable. And Alex?
You want to incorporate your changes on that, your suggested changes on that?
Yes, I'll do that. Thank you very much. So at this point, I will look to anybody who wishes to speak in front of the board, not on a matter that is otherwise happening tonight. So if you're not talking on zoning or any of the other special hearings, or any of the other new or old business I've mentioned, you are welcome to come forward at this point. Otherwise, please wait for the public hearing. So Mike, I know you wanted to speak. Are you speaking on anything in front of us tonight?
Yeah, I'm confused. You might be able to help me out here.
Okay, well, come and introduce yourself and state your name and address to the record, and then...
Excuse me. I'm Mike Mahalchuk. I live at 5 Bunton Street in East Milton. And I came because I was present at a warrant committee meeting where I saw a bylaw, a zoning bylaw, being introduced about sound, amplified sound. And I'm the parent of a 27-year-old son who has been confined to my house for the past year and a half because of noise and due pain. It's extremely debilitating, and we have basically dealt with it ourselves. Replaced the windows in the house. Some friends of his in high school, he was able to find a job last month, and I want to give a shout-out to Peter Berman and Julian Jackson, who made that happen. But I don't know if I... You know, I went on the Internet after I saw this bylaw for amplified sound, and I saw that the city of Newton had a six-page sound ordinance. And I'm just wondering, you know, there's going to be dark sky and light being considered, and whether we should have sound move at a slower pace than light here.
So, just to stop you there, we're going to be discussing the proposed amplified sound. It's not a zoning bylaw, the way we've proposed it now, but we will be discussing it with the zoning articles.
So I totally agree.
So if you want to be part of that public hearing with your comments, you'd want to wait and speak to it then.
Yeah, I don't want to repeat myself. That's wasting time with a big agenda.
Yeah, so all of your comments, if you want to be part of the public hearing, you should wait until that begins.
So here's my dilemma.
Yes.
A wise man named Ted Hayes told me that if I propose something like a six-page amendment to a existing one-paragraph thing, that might be out of scope.
Yes.
And I kind of hate to do anything that would encourage more noise. So I don't know if I should be just raising this now, or I'll wait till later, too.
If you're going to propose that the current amplified sound amendment to the general bylaws becomes a, which is about a paragraph and a bit, be turned into a six-page zoning bylaw, then you would be definitely out of scope. However, if you wanted to speak during the public hearing and say that you found, because what I'm hearing you say is that you believe the current bylaws inadequate, and you would prefer that the planning board address it differently, I would save that comment and have it recorded as part of the public hearing, because one of the things we'll be doing tonight is deciding which of these bylaws go forward to October and which would be held and submitted in January for the May town meeting. So it sounds to me, from what I'm hearing, that what you'd like to say would have a bearing on that decision by the board.
Okay, I am willing to give up watching part of a football game to come back later. Thank you.
Thank you, Mike. And we'll make sure that you're recognized when you get to that point. So at this point, we are getting close. We've actually passed the time for the site plan review on 333 Brushhill Road. Are those people here? So let's start you up and...
Can I maybe do that A&R for 152 and get those people out of here? It'd be quick.
Are they here? Are the other people for the other A&Rs here as well?
Just the first one.
Okay, so do you mind waiting a few more minutes? First to start? Okay, that's what I wanted to check. Great, thank you. So 152 Robbins Street, if the people who are here for that will come up for the A&R for 152 Robbins?
I'll do it for Mr. Lewis, but Mr. Lewis is here.
Okay, great.
Do you have a plan before you... The issue here, these two lots exist right now. The house that is at 152 is pre-existing one. Because the frontage comes out to be 148 or something, all it's done is take the entire property line and tilt it into lot D, the foot and a half that's required, so that the new course...
Okay. The new cord is 150 feet, so if you were to measure from both property lines in a straight line, you now have 150 feet.
So Lot D and Lot E are existing lots?
Yes.
And what we're doing is we're moving the property line so that that frontage is now 150 feet, correct?
Yes.
And can you say why we're doing, why are we making it 150 feet, so people understand?
We have zoning that requires straight-line frontage.
Okay.
In other words, it has to be from sideline to sideline in a straight line that meets 150 feet.
Okay.
It cannot take and follow the curve of the road to come up to be that 150 feet. By moving that property line a foot and a half to the left on the plan as you look at it, you achieve a cord distance of 150 feet.
Okay, someone should say on this plan that the cord distance is 150 feet. Cord to cord.
Cord to cord. And it's, there's the old one that shows where it came from.
Do members have any questions on this?
I don't know what cord to cord means, but...
Does that mean corner to corner?
Corner to corner.
Lot corner to lot corner, although it seems to be pointing to the iron rod.
That point is there, but this...
The iron rod.
Right. This one here is that point there, but you're taking from corner to corner, from that point to that point, 150 feet.
Okay, so it could move this way?
Yes.
Okay, well, looks okay to me. The iron rod was the mount.
Questions? Good. Ryan, questions?
No.
Anybody else have any questions? All right, do I have a motion?
We authorize Mr. Clark to endorse this plan as not requiring subdivision approval.
All right, do I have a second? Okay. Any other discussions? All those in favor?
Aye.
All right. Be animus. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right, let us move on to 333 Brushhill Road. We're going? Okay, so we are now being broadcast live as well as recorded, just so everybody is aware.
How did they do it?
Magic.
It's magic, yes. So since this is a public hearing process, I'm going to run through what the process is for everybody while you get yourselves set up. We'll have a report from the staff on outstanding items and new information received since the last public hearing on this. We'll have an update from the applicant on those outstanding items. Any questions from board members? Then we'll take testimony from members of the public, and we'll have identification at the end of that of outstanding items for the next meeting, if there is one. When we get to the point of public testimony, I will give the reminder of what the rules are for that. So Bill, do you want to update us? Tim, on this one?
So I was saying earlier, there's been a flurry of activity on this project. So the applicant submitted, we had a third-party peer review take a look at the drainage on this project. The applicant's engineers submitted new plans that they briefly presented two or three meetings ago. We've gotten a response from the third-party peer reviewer that we commissioned, and we got a response from the applicant to that response, which is all information you have in your packets. I assume Fred Geisel is going to present on that. So there's been some back and forth between the applicant and our peer reviewer, and I think it would be appropriate for him to start.
Great, excellent. So if you'll introduce yourself to the record.
Okay. My name is Frederick Geisel, professional civil engineer, working with civil environmental consultants on this project. And the last time I was here, I think, was the end of July. I believe so. Yeah, 27th of July, something like that, or thereabouts. We had some comments, additional comments, from both the planning board and from neighbors, and we made some further revisions to the plans that we presented at that time before we resubmitted, expanded our drainage system a little bit, and then responded to the peer review and included those plans. And I'll just describe what the changes have been from the plans you received back in the end of July. One thing was to leave as much of the area between the houses as undisturbed as we could by grading changes. So we changed our grading. We've kind of raised the houses up a little bit so that if there was any excess runoff or whatever, there might be, it would be between the houses rather than toward the houses. They're all downhill from the roadway, the driveway, common driveway, so make sure that they were raised up above. So if there's any runoff off the roadway, et cetera, that would be between the houses in the existing areas that are, which remain pretty well undisturbed. The other thing was, one of the neighbors on Beacon Street commented, and one of the other people from CEC had viewed it on one of our visits there, about actually water running off, kind of almost like a stream, a channel, a ditch, where water was running off towards here, towards the end of our access driveway. So what we've done is, we've extended our drainage system further up the driveway to make sure we can pick up any flows that are there, and actually have a catch basin, and two catch basins and a manhole there. So if someone actually wanted to make a physical connection, an area drain or something like that, into the manhole, they would be able to do that. And protects these properties because that water would be collected and not running down the hill or over the banks towards those properties. We've added a erosion control, basically a truck, get the mud off the truck tires before it leaves the site and goes on to the common driveway or Brushhill Road, et cetera. So that was added. And we basically include those changes since the end of July. We did get a response from Eggleston Environmental on the 4th of September, and responded to that with a letter which had been circulated. And I think, correct, you know, if I'm misunderstanding anything, but I think we addressed all of the issues that were raised in that letter, and there were just a couple of issues, things to be taken care of. Asked for more test pits in the area of our infiltration system when we go to install it, or prior to installing it, so that if we have to make any changes, we'd be able to do that, accommodate things, change some of the design parameters. And we've tried to include a reasonable amount of uphill drainage, and this plan, which is included in the plans we submitted, shows kind of the watershed line that we've included, including the existing drive, common driveway that comes down to the pavement areas, and we will get some flow off of these areas that will be coming down into our system. Other flows might be going off and bypassing, you know. They do now, and they will continue to do so. But we tried to take a reasonable approach, and we came up with almost five acres of watershed uphill or upstream of our detention area that we're including in our drainage analysis, which is the maximum amount of actually area. It doesn't even include areas beyond that are part of this parcel, because they're going to be unchanged. And I would just basically refer to the board, basically that's what we've done on the project.
Now, I understand Lisa Eggleston is here, too. Is anybody interested in, do you want to hear her report as well before we ask questions? So, okay, great. Lisa, thank you very much. Lisa, if you'd like to come forward and address your letters, that'd be fantastic.
Can I just sit here?
Yes, please do.
Okay.
And again, introduce yourself into the mic.
For the record, I'm Lisa Eggleston, professional engineer of Eggleston Environmental, and I was asked by the board to conduct a peer review of the drainage analysis, or the drainage design. And so I, just to give you a little bit of history, since this is my first time here, I did review the initial project back in June, conducted a site visit, talked with some members of the engineering department and so forth, and submitted in June a relatively lengthy comment letter. And then, as I believe Mr. Geisel referred to, they submitted design revisions, and that was the August 10th design revision, so I think that's post your last meeting. And so last week, I submitted some comments on that. And I think, for the most part, most of my comments have been satisfactorily addressed. My primary concerns, I was evaluating for conformance with the stormwater bylaw, your Milton stormwater bylaw, which by extension incorporates the DEP stormwater standards. And many of the revisions have been made. Couple of concerns that I highlighted, it's not a requirement of this project, but the fact that this site had been previously identified for potential mitigation for other drainage problems on the larger development. And just pointing out that the development of this portion of the property does preclude implementation of some of those recommendations in the 2010 Conoco study. And so other alternatives would need to be sought if that type of remediation is, in fact, needed. I did have some questions on the upgrading area that's included, just because there, and I recognize that the developer here can't necessarily provide drainage controls for everything that's coming on to the site. Usually, we like to see that, but this is, you know, got a fairly extensive hill above it. You know, they're clearly mitigating any increases in runoff from the proposed development. So the question is whether or not they can also include in their drainage system, because that water is going to flow into, you know, it flows across the site. And I believe that that's what Mr. Geisel just referred to, that they're getting some but not all of the drainage that goes through this property. So there will be drainage through these lots that will continue to flow down the hill. The only other thing that I had concern about was having to do with the sizing of the system and just the drainage analysis. When we do an analysis that says that we have detention to attenuate the 100-year storm, I'd raise the issue that this detention is being provided in subsurface structures. So in order to ensure that the 100-year storm is getting to those subsurface structures, the piping system and the catch basins need to be designed to convey the 100-year storm. Now, that's not typical. Usually, we design for a 10- or 25-year storm. But if you're using that detention capacity to achieve the required detention, then you need to ensure that it's getting to that basin. Or you run your calculations and you say it's not going to get into the catch basin, it's going to overtop, and it's going to flood on the roads, and whatever, and identify where it is going to flood. And so I don't, I'm not sure that that loop has been totally closed. Perhaps Mr. Geisel can answer it more clearly. He did respond to it in the letter. But it talks about the pipe restricting the 25-year flow, but then the only other storage area is for the area that's not getting into the pipe. So I would ask that that perhaps be pursued a little bit. And then the other thing was just to recommend to the board that you include in any condition of approval, a requirement for additional soil testing, because the additional soil testing that was done was done in the area that's pretty much cleared now. It shows, you know, positive conditions in terms of, or consistent conditions in terms of soil suitability. But generally, it is a large system. We like to see one actually within the footprint of the infiltration system. So that could be done at the time of installation. They just overexcavate, document that it has at least two feet of groundwater and bedrock, and that it's suitable.
And if it's not suitable, what happens?
Well, I wouldn't be recommending it if I didn't expect it, but then there would have to be some change to the design, and they would need to come back to you.
Okay, so we should provide, if we provide for additional soil testing, we should provide for the possibility that it's going to require some additional...
Yes, yes. If it does not confirm the design assumptions, that they would return to the board with a revised design. Yep.
I was curious about, you said that it's not going to address some of the flow that's already existing on the site. Is that flow from other parts of the site not included in this particular project, but still a part of this development? Or is it coming from off-site completely?
Well, I guess I'm not totally clear on what you're calling off-site and on-site, and I don't, I'm not as familiar with the history of this development. But basically, I know that, and I'm not sure which of my comments you're talking about. The plan, the Conoco plan that I referred to, the 2010 one, I think was aimed at dealing with some of the drainage problems that occur along the Brushhill Road frontage, and bringing some of that flow, intercepting some of it, and if I may, intercepting it and bringing it over, diverting it over here. So it's not flow that currently goes across this property, but diverting it over and basically infiltrating it or storing it in this area.
I guess the reason I ask is, my concern would be if it's, this is already flow that's going into neighboring properties from the development of the mansions at Brushhill, then it concerns me that there would be nothing to address that, just because it's not in the site that's specific to this development.
Well...
And then I wonder if it's going to get channeled, because now there's houses, and then will it get channeled between the houses?
To some extent, it will.
And create more of a stream instead of spread out? And then I wonder if the disturbance of the soil and the removal of trees would also increase that.
Well, I'll answer your last question first. And the disturbance of the soil, the removal of trees will increase it, but that part has been factored into their design, just as with any development. You know, they need to mitigate for the potential increases that are caused by clearing the trees, adding impervious area, and so forth. And so what I would say is that the design that's proposed with the roof infiltrator systems and this larger infiltration system does compensate for the projected increases that would occur. What it does not do is it does not capture all of that runoff that's currently draining down next to the tennis court and across this property. And you're right, it is possible that it could be channelized in those, you know, in the grading between here.
Other questions from board members?
Well, is it going to be better?
Well, I believe Mr. Geisel did indicate that they have added a portion of that drainage area into this, so it's, you know, it is going to capture some of the runoff, yes.
Overall, though, is this development, the drainage from this development, going to be better? The whole shooting match, the brushwood estate development, is the drainage going to be better than it currently is?
I would say that this provides a net increase in capture and infiltration of the runoff.
Yes.
Mike, you had a question?
I got it. My question was similar, and that was just that people downhill of this site will probably experience less runoff.
I would assume that, yes.
Okay.
Now, on the 100-year storm, you're saying the retention system is sized to accept the 100-year storm, but you're saying the manholes, the catch basins, the size of the pipe that leads to it does not allow...
Does not necessarily, no. That's designed for a 25-year storm. So that was the issue that I raised, and I think should be clarified.
So the retention and...
If it can't get to the retention system, it's kind of moved.
Then it's oversized for useless reason.
Right.
So then I think we should have some clarification on that.
Yes.
Can I address that?
Yes, absolutely.
There was actually only one portion of the piping system that is not sized for a 100-year storm. And that is, we have a, basically to collect the flow that's coming in from here, from the tennis court and from surrounding areas that may be draining into here, we have a creating by grading, creating basically a little basin in that area. And purposely, we have sized the outsole pipe from this basin tying into our rest of our drainage system, undersized it purposely, so that we would retain some of the flow in this basin during extreme storms, 25-year storm, 100-year storm that we analyzed. And it would build up less than a foot of storage under 25-year storm, and maybe up to a foot and a half of storage, ponded water, temporarily during a 100-year storm. And that was in my response letter dated September 8th. That was done purposely, just to take some of the pressure off what's coming into the system. The rest of the pipes will handle a 100-year storm with no problem at all. We went through a complete analysis of that. We did a couple things. We have a storm scepter that's right off the edge of the road. It's about a 20-foot length of pipe. We actually upsized. We could have served that storm scepter with a 12-inch pipe, but we have had to increase the slope, but therefore increase the velocity coming in there. So we increased it to a 15-inch pipe, shall flatten the slope so that the flow would be a lot smoother and not as fast coming in there, and therefore allow the storm scepter system to work better. So we purposely, we looked at every little aspect part of it, and then coming out of the storm scepter, it's a increased flow. We kept the 15-inch pipe as a steeper slope coming down to our infiltrators, basically to get everything down there as quickly as we can. So basically, we've upsized everything. We've, it'll handle, it'll deliver the 100-year storm to these infiltrators. The fact... The fact is, we're capturing all the flows coming down through here, so that where there may be channel flow, and we reported a channelized flow in this area here, we won't have that anymore. We're intercepting all those flows. So instead of the flows coming down through here during extreme storm, we're going to capture it all in the drainage system coming into here and our little basin, or in the roadway that's basically going to block all that flow and capture it. So that we will definitely decrease the off-site flows, the channelized flows and flooding that might occur to downstream properties. Definitely do that.
The natural basin that you created to retain the water intentionally?
Yes.
Is it constructed so that it won't wash out?
Right, yeah.
Is it necessary to have any maintenance periodically?
Well, there's going to be, just a catch basin drainage there. That's going to have a sump in it, so if there's any siltation, whatever, and that's called for in our maintenance program to, all the catch basins will be, you know, cleaned out periodically. If there's any silt and sand in the basin, they'll be cleared out. And what's surrounding it is a, basically a retaining wall, a small, short, fairly short retaining wall, but it's going to be a retaining wall, concrete structure going all the way around here. So that it'll, it basically creates a, essentially a dam, a small dam. We're talking, we're only talking about a couple feet high on the side, so it's not going to be a...
Can you point to where the catch basins are in the roadway?
They're hard to hear, see, but there's two up at the upper end of our driveway up here, across from the first lot.
Okay.
There's another, two basins down here. We go into our drain system here, catch basins here. There's other catch basins up on this section over here. So there's basically like, they show a little bit clearer on the plan and profile plan.
Yeah, I was just curious when you said the roadway would capture some of the runoff.
Right.
It's Cape Cod berm, right? So it could go over that pretty quickly, so it has to get to the catch basins, right?
Right, yes. And one of the things I comment on in terms of the, more than the 25-year storm, is that this portion of the roadway is fairly steep. It's up to 8% slope, and that, you know, with that kind of a slope, some of the water running in the gutter line, basically we have a roadway profile from the center line of the road over, and then we have Cape Cod berm. So the channels of water towards the side where the Cape Cod berm is, you know, between the edge of the road and then the berm coming out. In an extreme storm, some of that water may bypass the catch basin, and it'll flow down to the low point of the road, so there may be some limited ponding, temporary ponding as the water gets into the drainage system. And that's, that will make occur, and I think that occurs all the time. It's basically ponding in the street. You see it until the water can get to where it's got to go and drain out. Usually, it happens when you have grades that are very shallow pitched and there's not much slope to them, so the water puddles the edge of the road after every storm. But this is a situation where we have fairly steep slope driveway, the water may bypass the catch basin in extreme storm, and then make it down to the next catch basin at the low point and pond a little bit before it goes into the system.
Any other comments from board members or questions from board members before we open this up to the public? All right. If not, you two will sit back, so we're going to do the public testimony. So I'm going to ask that you wait to be recognized before speaking. Come to the table and give your name and address and speak into the microphone. When you're done, please leave the table. All questions or comments must be directed to the chair. Speakers may not cross-examine applicant, board members, or other speakers. The applicant will be asked to respond to questions at the end of the public input session, and in this case, because we also have an engineer who's been working for the town, she also will be able to answer questions. So does anybody wish to speak on 333 Brush Hill Road? No? All right. Well, please come forward. You got to jump quick.
275 Mount Hill Road, Nancy Cohen.
Welcome.
And I've been to every meeting. And I have to be honest, I don't understand if it's going to help my house. Maybe. The catch basins, and it sounds like we're protecting 333 Brush Hill Road, but could somebody explain to me if my house is going to be any better off?
Can you show us on the plan where your house is? And more importantly, show both the engineers where your house is.
This one is a little bit, this is Brush Hill Road. This is Brush Hill Road, I think it just off the line.
I'm right, right?
295 here. This is Brush Hill Road right here.
Yeah, 275 Hill Road here. You want me to show you on this map here?
Right, that's beautiful.
Be gone straight on down here.
295 is here.
I'm off the map.
295 is here.
295 is the neighborhood.
Next turn, it was here down here.
I'm two miles over.
Right, okay, you're down here.
Exactly. I have to speak here. I have just moved 275, I'm 275. I'm right as you come up...
You'll need the microphone. Right behind you, there you go.
I'm sorry.
Your other town engineer.
She's a consultant.
Consultant, okay. So I'm off the map, but 275 is as you come up Brush Hill Road from Truman Parkway. I'm the first house on the right. And I've lived in the house as of July 2015 for 16 years. I had a lawn 16 years ago, and I'm not sure if this plan is going to make any difference. I'm not sure, because I don't understand what's been discussed, because I can't see. It sounds like we're, 333 is better, because my neighbor told me when I moved in, Nancy, that half the problems was because of the condos. So I have to congratulate everybody. I think you're doing a better job with the condos, but I still don't know if my house is going to be any better off.
Okay. So hold there for one second. Is anybody else here for 333 Brush Hill Road that, whose house is close about her? Because then we can ask them to address all of the flows at once. Anybody else for 333 Brush Hill Road? Okay, we're going to get an answer to your question.
Thank you.
All right. So if you two, if you'll come back, yes, please, sir, and walk through how this will work.
Oops, I'm sorry, just tried to slide over here so you can see. This neighbor is down over here off Brush Hill Road. All of our activity is this way, basically to the west, I'm sorry, to the east. My direction's correct. No, to the west. I was right, I was right. Upside down, that's west, over here, of that property. And all of our activity is going here, and basically all of the drainage that we're picking up is flowing in this direction. That, there's an existing drain system that up in the upper regions here, which is collected and goes out to Brush Hill Road, and we're not affecting that. We're not adding to it. We might, we're basically going to pick up what doesn't get into that drain system that may come down to here now, and we're going to try to pick that up and infiltrate it. But we won't be adding anything there, and we really can't take that flow out of Brush Hill Road. We can't do anything about that.
I understand.
Okay.
You did a really good job. Yeah, I can't really add to that. That's, I think that was the drainage issue that the Conoco study was meant to remediate.
So the bottom-line assumption would be that it'd be zero positive, negative effect to, as a result of this?
The only thing is, are you aware that along Brush Hill Road outside of 333, as I walked along the wall, you know, like drains out? You know that.
So you have to address, sorry, you have to address comments to me and then...
I'm sorry.
Yes. And make sure you have the mic so the camera...
Yep. So if you look at 333 Brush Hill Road from the Brush Hill roadside and you look at the wall, there are actually drains coming out of the wall from the, and you see that water, because I've walked the street during heavy, I wouldn't say 25- or 100-year rainstorms, it's like we have them every year. And there was water coming out, draining out of the 333 complex onto the street. So I'm wondering if you were aware of that, if they were aware of that?
Okay.
Yeah.
All right. So again, direct that back over. Do you just pass the mic back? Sorry, there's only one down there. Do you affect those drains at all?
We don't affect those drains, only in that if there is a extreme outflow, and we're doing some grading as to build this roadway, that if we, some of the water, and I think what those drains are, are basically as a, like a relief on the wall elevation, like a...
Weep hole.
A weep hole, et cetera. That's how, like the groundwater that may be building up behind the wall to drain out. So I don't think they're adding a lot to flow there. The only thing we might be affecting is if we're picking any of the flow up here, but that's pretty far away from Brush Hill Road. We're picking any of the flow up here that, you know, that might migrate that way. The grades are not conducive to that, so I don't think we'll have really much effect on it.
So ma'am, we're starting to move into a back-and-forth here, which we really should not be doing.
Right.
So if you have any further questions, I'm going to ask you to ask them all at once, so that they can address them all at once.
I'm done.
You sure? Okay. Because I want to give you the time to answer.
No, that's why I had to get up, because nobody else is representing, but at least I came and heard what you were doing. We'll see what happens. Thank you.
Thank you very much. So, the board should discuss the next steps. Do we have any further questions? Are we at a point where you, first of all, is there anybody else here who wishes to speak to 333 Brush Hill Road? All right, seeing none. Do board members feel that they have sufficient information at this point to close the public hearing? Is there something that you feel is, information that you feel is outstanding?
I'm satisfied.
Alex, Mike?
I think we can close the public hearing. And I think that someone could prepare a draft, and then we can discuss it in the context of our deliberations.
Okay. And are you making a motion to close the public hearing?
I will make a motion to close the public hearing.
Do you have a second?
Second.
Okay, any other deliberations? All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, great. Does anybody wish to volunteer to prepare the draft for discussion at our next meeting?
I'll prepare a draft, but it won't be ready for the next meeting.
Okay. First meeting in October? Is that reasonable?
Well, try for that.
Okay, let's aim for that.
Try for that.
All right. So we're going to have our deliberations on this at our first meeting in October, which would be October 8th. Alex will be working on the draft, probably in conjunction with town planning staff, so he may be in touch with one or both of you on that. And thank you very much for attending. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
All right. So the next public hearing on our agenda is the zoning articles for the October town meeting, and we're also going to be discuss the proposed amplified sound amendment to the general bylaw at the same time. So we are going to open that public hearing right now. I'd like to sort of do a little introductory piece to let people know where the board is with this and what we've been doing. So this was kicked off in May as an initiative of the planning board to do some proactive zoning research and preparation of articles. This came out of a couple of different sources. One is the master plan that the town recently went through a multi-year process on, and the planning board voted to accept as our town's master plan in June. It also came out of work that the planning board has been doing over the last few years, where we've seen various issues come in front of us as part of either citizen requests or proposals for articles or work we've been doing in our special permit hearings. And so what we did was we divvied up a whole list of issues at the beginning of the summer. We've had three public workshops or forums, one in June, one in July, and one in August. We have proposed some language, took a couple of things off the agenda for this October. We have proposed language for several articles for the October town meeting, and tonight is our formal public hearing on those articles. They've been out for public comment, both by people going to the public workshop and also online. One of the things we recognize in doing this over the summer is that a lot of people may not be around for every meeting in the summer. So in addition to significant public outreach led by the planning staff to let people know about the workshops and our initiative, we also put everything online, including the presentations that were done at each of the workshops. We set up an online survey that people could take from anywhere at any time, and two sets of comment periods online as well. We have been learning a lot about how to do this through the process. In many ways, kicking it off over the summer was an excellent test process to see how we could reach out to people, where some of our outreach was working and where some of it wasn't. It was also a good test process for seeing how many people interacted with us. I will say, this public hearing is very much still part of the process, and if board members feel that any of these zoning proposals are not ready for prime time, as it were, if they are not ready for October, then I certainly am very comfortable in setting them aside for January and continuing to work on them. We have no mandate to bring all of these articles, or in fact, any of these articles to town meeting. Having said that, there are a few articles that people have expressed really deep interest in, one of them being signs. We do have to report back to town meeting on condominiums, but if what comes out of tonight is, I get up at town meeting and report on the process and say, "Hey, we weren't satisfied, we're bringing them back to you in January," I have no problem doing that. This is something that the planning board and the town has not done before. You may or may not want to consider how many people we were able to reach over the summer. Certainly, the articles that are on deck for discussion tonight, some of them have a number of ramifications for the town. And I think that whatever we decide to go forward tonight, we should, at the town meeting in October, be able to say to the town meeting members, "Our next public meeting to discuss zoning will be on such and such a date." Because I'm not sure how many of these will survive our discussion tonight, but we should be prepared, we should be prepared with a plan going forward for whatever happens, whether it's for the articles that are in front of us tonight going forward to January, or whether it's for the articles that we've already taken off the table going forward to January, or indeed to October of next year. So having said that, let me pull out the articles that we're going through tonight so the public's aware of them. We'll start discussion with board members. This is not the same as the special permit process, just so you know. What we're going to do is I'll read out which articles we've got, then we'll have some discussion from board members, and then I really want to open it up to public comment early, because I see a number of people that have been at some of the meetings. And then we will come back to board discussion of these articles and decide what we want to do about them. So going forward, at the moment for discussion tonight, we have a proposed sign bylaw, inclusionary zoning, accessory dwelling unit, lighting bylaw, non-conforming dimensions, non-conforming business use, bed and breakfast, and amplified sound, which is a general bylaw rather than a zoning bylaw. So first, board members, I'd like to hear from you. And Cheryl, I saw your hand up, so I'll recognize you first, and then we'll go to the public for comment. Yes?
Thank you. I just wanted to find out whether we got town council opinion on the draft bylaws?
We have not received town council opinion on the draft bylaws.
And do we have a sense of when we will receive that?
Bill, were you able to speak to town council office?
I've got several emails into them, and I have not heard.
Okay. And then, second question, just process-wise.
Yes.
At town meeting, if we, these articles, some are all, are decided to be deferred until the spring, will there be opportunity to make presentation about the articles at the fall town meeting? So to, there's a lot of people there, all the town meeting members, obviously.
Yes.
It's a good audience, and it's recorded, so the public can see it. So it seems like it's a good opportunity to get input, or at least make people aware so that they can follow up at the next meeting that we have following that.
Yeah, I think that's an important point. Now, normally, as you know, at town meeting, you can only address the articles that are in front of the town. However, the moderator has the ability to allow people, the discretion, I should say, to allow people to make reports or presentations of things that... of things that aren't specifically on the warrant. He's certainly done that in the past. And we have been asked, if you remember from the May town meeting, where several articles did not get, go through because they were referred back to the planning board, we were asked to report on that. So depending on what happens tonight, I would certainly make a request to the moderator that we allow, that we be allowed to make a presentation to town meeting to say what we've been doing on, what's before them, or potentially not before them, and what the next steps in the process are. And he, I have not, obviously, checked with him yet on that, but he's certainly been very helpful in granting things like that in the past. So I think that would be an excellent idea, rather than just saying, hey, we didn't have anything for you at our next meeting is. I think it would in fact be important to make a presentation on what we've been doing and why, so.
Well, I think it's important to get as much awareness and feedback as possible. Rather than having an article that raises a lot of questions at town meeting that gets sent back to the planning board for more study, which is a possibility.
Yes.
You know, still. But it, the more people, granted that the summer's a busy time and not everyone's aware and watching the reruns of our meetings, it is a good opportunity, I think, to still, to make people aware again before they come back to them.
Any other comments from board members before we go?
Of the sign bylaw?
Yes.
Let me distribute this. This, I made comments on all the bylaws, 17 pages, single space. Go to page six.
Page six.
Which are my comments on the sign bylaw.
Yep.
And this bylaw came because people were unhappy about lights. And they said the discretion in this selectman is too great. And what has happened here is that there are some standards established. But in the end, the selectmen are given discretion to decide whatever they want. And it is exactly the same as what we have now, except far more complicated, almost impossible to comprehend. It isn't an improvement. If anything, it's a step backward. And it doesn't address the problem of lights, because the selectmen, it says, you know, at, towards the end, certain lights are permitted and certain are not permitted, but then the selectman can waive it, can make an exception to these things. So I don't think it addresses what the problem was. I've got some other issues. It combines the sign requirements for both the business and the residence districts into one combined body. And this is a huge mistake. Currently, they're separate. The signs in the residence districts are likely to be basically political signs and idea signs and holiday lighting, which I might say, this bylaw says all of these are exempt from any regulation. The residence lighting issues should be separately, in a separate section, just the way they are now. And don't get me wrong, it's a terrible separate section now, but it should be fixed. It just shouldn't be folded in with this other thing. This bylaw has five pages of definitions, many of which are nowhere used in the bylaw. And beyond that, they want to put all these definitions into the, the general definition section of the bylaw, which would cause it to be probably five times as long as it is now. Many of these are specialized definitions, such as normal grade. You put that in the general definition section, people will think, well, normal grade is applicable everywhere. It's not. It's only applicable to signs. The definition of sign, last year, or the last time we did signs, was, was said to be far too broad. So they've refined it down so that a number of things are no longer covered, like political signs, like idea signs, like holiday lighting. I mean?
Alex, can I just stop you there? I think some of your review was on an earlier draft?
No. It was on the?
It was on the August 26th.
August 26th, 2015.
Okay, just, I just wanted to make sure that was okay.
The, the new definition was changed from the, I mean, this thing has been changed all along the line. It was only put to bed on August 27th, when the ad came out. August 26th, this was an August 26th.
Yes. Do you know what? Whoa, 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 stop. First of all, hold on a sec. I just want to say, for those of you who can't see Alex's comments, that Alex has given the most thorough and thoughtful comments of any member of the board. And I have to say that I personally have always relied on Alex to do that. I will say, however, the reason that it was put to bed on August 27th was it was 12:30 a.m. on August 27th, after I'd had a meeting with the sign, review committee that lasted for approximately three hours, and then I had to go home and make the changes on that. So be slightly fair on that. I agree, in fact, with many of your comments on all of the articles. I will say, on signs, this is substantially different from what we have in our sign bylaws. And what I had heard from a number of sources, including people who'd appeared in front of town meeting and the planning board, is that they were looking for more strict regulations. Now, we had talked a little bit earlier about whether or not something should go forward to town meeting, any of these should go forward to town meeting. And one reason to put any of these articles in town meeting is to get the input back from town meeting members. And the sign bylaw is an interesting one in that respect. Because what it does is it says, if this town wants a stricter set of sign regulations, this is one way of doing it. And it would be, a stricter set of sign regulations would be a substantially longer set of regulations than we have now. However, the town may not want that. And one of the things that's been interesting, and Alex started to allude to it with his definitions and with some of the others, is how much of what we want to regulate on signs goes in the design guidelines that already exist and could be modified versus the zoning regulations. And this, and I'm bringing this up now, and Alex, I'll, I'll let you continue in a second, but I'm bringing this up now because it's an important point for all of the bylaws that are in front of us, which is, how much does the town want to be bound by the regulations versus how much it wants in some sort of guidance document that the planning board, or the ZBA, or the Board of Selectmen can use in limited circumstances? And the reason, Alex will be before you, Cheryl. And the reason I bring this up under sign bylaws, but we may want to consider it for some of the others that have design guidelines in them, is that items that are in the zoning bylaws have a legal requirement. They have a regulatory effect. Somebody coming in front of the planning board or the ZBA under the zoning bylaws must meet those criteria. If they're in design guidelines, a separate design guideline document, the way we have for the sign review committee now, they provide guidance as to how the application might be treated, but they don't have the same force of law. They don't have the same teeth as they do in the regulatory documents. Now, some towns and cities have their zoning so that it says, okay, here's, here's the basic zoning. We're going to point you to the design guidelines for how you're going to be treated, whether it's a special permit, or a sign permit, or however. And others have these things written into the regulations. And I think this is a question that we need to address, obviously, tonight, if we take any of these forward. And the town as a whole needs to address, how much do they want in the zoning regulations? And how much do they want in the design guidelines? Alex, I'm going to look back to you, and then I know Cheryl had a question as well. But I just wanted to treat that larger point.
All right. Well, if you look at the criteria for review by the sign review committee.
Can you give us the page, please?
Page nine of the, page eight and nine of the zoning.
Yep.
Their principal criteria is said to be the Town of Milton's signed facade design handbook is adopted and amended by the Board of Selectmen.
Yep.
So the Board of Selectmen are creating the standards by their booklet, not? The standards are, there are some standards in this document, but very few. Most of the standards would appear in this design booklet established by the selectmen. So the, enacting this 18 pages of almost incomprehensible text would have no particular beneficial effect. And it certainly wouldn't make it a tighter process, because the selectmen can waive it.
That actually reflects current practice. And I was asked by the sign review committee to put it in there.
And current practice is fine, but why change it to just do the current practice in a different way? I mean, you have the sign review committee, and they do a great job. So what does this do? It substitutes the building commissioner for the sign review committee.
It doesn't actually, that's one of the things I changed.
It does actually.
All right. So, so I understand that you have deep concerns about this, but it's not the only zoning article in front of us.
I understand that.
Right, I know.
But this is the first time I have been able to discuss these before the board.
I've been inviting everybody at the last few minutes, minutes, meetings to discuss them. But please, go ahead, Alex. I just want to make sure we have time for every them.
I don't think that, I don't think that's fair. I don't think that's fair. You've been inviting everyone. You should have put it on, and before this was written and changed, it should have been discussed, the changes should have been discussed with the board. The board should have been part of the process. The only person who came up with this is you. I made some comments.
You did.
You pick and choose, you, you picked and you chose among those comments. I'm making some of the same comments now. But, you know, that's not the way the process is supposed to work. These is, if this is a planning board article, the planning board is supposed to have, have had some input into it. And it hasn't, in my view.
So everybody made comments by email. Those were distributed to all of the authors of the articles. All of the authors of the articles, presumably, I know I did, took into account what the other planning board members said. This has been an agenda item at every single meeting this summer. At every single meeting, I've asked what boards, what board members wanted to do. We talked about the process going forward. If you feel that the board has not had sufficient input into this or any other article, then I say that weighs into our decision as to whether or not we want to go forward in October. I mean, I accept that as a perfectly reasonable criticism. If, if that's, if that's an issue, yeah, absolutely, then let's talk about that.
It's an issue with me. This is not?
That's fine.
I mean, when you do zoning, if someone comes up with an idea and they say, okay, let's do an accessory, let's do a sign bylaw.
Yep.
Then, you know, I, two years ago, did a sign bylaw.
You did.
Which, you know, was totally rejected. You didn't use any piece of it. It had, it was basically directed at residential signs.
Yes.
And it, it fell short because of holiday lights, basically. But, you know, if at the beginning, you said, how should we go about this? You said, I've got some great examples from other towns. I might have said, well, you know, I sort of like what I did two years ago. It doesn't need much to fix it. But there was no, you, you know, you came up with, you came up with your draft, and then you, you know, you got comments and you changed your draft. And on 10 past 12 on August 27th, you filed it as the planning board document. And that's not how the process is supposed to work, in my view.
Fair enough. That's your view. I accept that as your view.
And I really believe that this is the first time that a proper opportunity has been given to the planning board members to express their views.
Fair enough.
That's my view. I don't like the definition of sign. I don't think it, as I say, it doesn't cover political signs.
It's Framingham's, just so you know.
It may be Framingham's.
I'm not saying?
Framingham is, is off base.
Yes, Cheryl, sorry, Alex, if you don't mind, Cheryl, have a comment.
Do you mind? This is just more process, not content.
I will, I will, I will yield the floor.
Just, Alex, you have submitted to us a lot of detailed comments on all the articles, which we just received and I think haven't all digested. I do think that we need adequate time to work through your concerns. But one of the comments I'd like to make is, I'd like for the comments that we all come up with to be helpful to one another. Who, those of us who are working on drafts of zoning are not attorneys and have little experience writing the zoning. And what we may find from this process is this may not be the ideal way to do this. But on the other hand, let's try to agree on some of the goals that we're trying to achieve here. And I think that's some of the most important part. What are some of the goals with each of these, these articles? And if they're not ready to take to town meeting, let's get public comment on what they've seen thus far. And that'll help us work through this even further. I personally think that, for example, signage is an important one to address. In the master plan discussions, there were comments about the quality of our commercial districts. If you compare them to some other towns and their commercial districts, and signage is a big part of that. Lighting and signage are big parts of the, what make a commercial district attractive. So I do think it's something, there are people who are unhappy about particular signs that were approved by the selectmen, and they are unhappy about the process that is discretionary. So I do think it's a result of people's comments that we're even trying to address this. And I think that's some of, all of these articles. I think from the housing production plan to the master plan, to other citizens petitions that have come before town meeting, I think we're trying to address some of the frustration of some people, or even just the suggestion of some people to, let's make some improvements. So I think as a goal, the sign bylaws is a great goal. I, I do think we can, the, the detail of how to get there, I think we're short on a lot of these articles on exactly how to get there with the language of.